Good morning. Good morning. The regular, this regular meeting, the Lone Star College System Board of Trustees is now called to order at 10:31 a.m. We will now stand and proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Wilson, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you. And then if you'll remain standing after the pledge, please.
You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair recognizes trustee Saldivar for a moment.
Yes, I would like to have a moment of silence in, in honor of Congressman Sylvester Turner in his passing. I think he, he merits this and much more for his advocacy and education and, and Lone Star College. So if you could please just stay a couple of minutes, a moment in silence, that would be, we really appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee Saldivar. We will now move, now move to roll call. Yeah. Sullivan, present. Trustee Saldivar, present. Trustee Wilson, present. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
I'm here.
Yeah, there's a present online. Trustee Mesa?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Mario?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Vote?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Kane?
Here.
Thank you. We'll now take, um, we'll now go to the chancellor for certification of the posting of the agenda. Chancellor Castillo has noticed that this meeting been posted.
I certify that the posting of the notice of this regular board meeting has been done so in accordance with the law, Chair.
Hey, thank you very much. And is this the break for the photo? Okay, trustees, we'll now step out to the side hall, if you don't mind, for a group photo, and then we'll come back in. So, audience, if y'all bear with us just for a moment, please. Thank you for bearing with us. We've not had an opportunity to have a group photo with all the trustees and the chancellor, so we've got that taken care of. Next item is public comment. Ms. Barnett, has anyone signed up to offer a public comment?
Yes, we have one person, Dr. John Bergdoff.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allowed to speak for up to five minutes. There is a timer on the podium with lights. When the light turns red, your time is expired.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board of Trustees, employees of Lone Star College, and visitors. I am Dr. John Bergdoff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. As you know, a recurring theme that the union has presented in these proceedings and also in our newsletter, the advocate, is our great appreciation for the good work both the administration and the board have done over the past many years to keep employee pay caught up with and even ahead of inflation. Chancellor Castillo is recommending to the board a 3% cost of living increase for all employees in the budget for fiscal year 2026, which is currently under construction. Once again, this is good news for Lone Star employees. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reported in February that the Consumer Price Index, a recognized measure of overall inflation, increased by precisely 3% over the 12-month period ending in January 2025. If this rate holds largely unchanged over the next year, the pay increase the chancellor has proposed will once again achieve the goal of keeping employees whole. Generally speaking, Lone Star employees have the talents and expertise that would earn us a great deal more money working somewhere other than a community college. We choose to work here because we believe passionately in the mission. We don't expect to become rich, but we do hope to be able to take care of ourselves and our loved ones without falling behind. Keeping up with inflation ensures that we can continue to do so and that we can continue to do the good work on behalf of our students that we are committed to do. Therefore, the union urges approval of the increase in pay proposed by the chancellor for the upcoming budget at the appropriate time. In addition, we applaud the decision he announced yesterday to increase pay immediately for tutors and proctors, lifting up some of our lowest-paid employees. We live in uncertain economic times. Inflation has largely stabilized since the end of the pandemic and had been showing signs of staying low. Depending on to what degree leadership in Washington leans in on imposing tariffs and deporting undocumented workers, pressure on inflation could escalate dramatically. Costs the college pays for goods and services could increase dramatically as they would for employees. The union wishes to acknowledge that where inflation may go will be beyond both the foreknowledge and the control of the administration and the board. We will stand up for you and assure our members that we are confident that you're trying your best. As the budget comes together, if you happen to be able to find some extra change under the seat cushions, employees would be grateful if some of that could come our way as well. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Barnett, any other public comment? Okay, thank you very much. Now that we've heard from all speakers, we will move on to approval of the minutes. It is now time for approval of the minutes of the February 6th, 2025 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, there being no corrections, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by trustee Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Mesa, is there any discussion? See no discussion, into a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar? Yes, okay, thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Trustee Stoma says yes. Trustee Mesa?
Aye.
Trustee Mesa says yes. Trustee Mario?
Aye.
Trustee Mario says yes. Trustee Vote?
Aye.
Trustee Vote says yes. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Trustee Kane says yes. Sullivan, yes. The item passes unanimously. We'll now move to special reports and announcements. Chancellor Castillo, do you have any special reports or announcements?
I do, Chair. Thank you. First, we're going to start with previous and forthcoming events. We had board members travel with us to ACCT National Legislative Summit. I've discussed that briefly in the past. We also had my investiture on Valentine's Day.
And this is, can I interrupt you, please? Did you say investiture?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What is happening?
Welcome to the investiture of the fifth chancellor of the Lone Star College System, Mr. Mario K. Castillo. Out of the night that covers me black as the pit from pole to pole, I thank whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. Look, this is about what you represent, Mario, and what you're going to do. This is just the beginning. What you're going to do to offer opportunities for all the kids in Lone Star College. I too strive to be the first of many as Chancellor Castillo.
Since day one, Chancellor Castillo has brought a fresh approach to the college system by leading with empathy, passion, and a deep focus on student success.
It's great to have modesty, but this isn't just about you. You didn't get here by yourself.
I'm here to tell you, your chancellor is not bluffing. This is who he is, and you are led by a great man that I'm very proud and privileged to call my friend.
Mario would always act in someone else's interest before his own. You're very fortunate to have him. I am proud of you. Love you.
A man's gift makes room for him and brings him before great men.
I sent out 400 applications, and that man's Amanda gave me a chance.
It is my privilege to now introduce to you the fifth chancellor of Lone Star College, Mr. Mario K. Castillo.
A mi mamá le do las gracias. To my mother, I give you the thanks. Le do las gracias por todos estos versos. My mother, I thank you. Look how far we've come. I was raised by a janitor to become the CEO, but I, without a doubt, would not be the first Latino chancellor, the youngest chancellor, without my father. So, a mi madre le do las gracias a mi papá. That we have 91,350 students that have placed their hopes and dreams in us. Anything that you do to get yourself ahead and to put your family forward is worthy of our respect and our admiration because it is an act of courage to walk up to one of our counters and say, I want more than I have. I want more than what I grew up with. What are we going to do, ladies and gentlemen?
You may proceed.
So you know, when I saw that on the list, I was going to take it off because I don't like talking about myself, and now I know why the staff insisted. So, thank you. That's very, very touching and a complete surprise, which is the only way you could have pulled that off. So, thank you. So, thank you. I'm very touched. All right. We also, that same day, we had the employee awards, and that was, that was really sort of special to have the investiture and then the employee awards right afterward. We also welcome Mr. Russell Richard on February 20th in the Stevensy Head Building in the Star Room at that system office, The Woodlands, for our Black History Month Speaker Series. We had Watts at Kingwood on February 21st. We had the retiree celebration on February 25th. We had the board retreat, as the board knows, last Friday. And I don't think I have to remind anyone, but really, we have spring break starting, I'm told, Saturday. So, spring break is next week for the board, and then we have Watts Tom Ball on March 21st, 2025. And just really, so those are our events. And really what I wanted to talk about today, just real briefly, is we are keeping track, trustees and, and board members, faculty and staff, and administrators of Lone Star College, we're keeping a really close eye on what's happening in DC. You know, everything from whether or not the Department of Education is going to be dismantled or shrunk to Pell Grants, to Trio and Perkins and all the folks that, we have 452 employees that depend on grants. So while for a lot of people that may be a nascentary conversation, there are real jobs and real humans and real families that depend on those grants, and we have 452 employees. And so we have contingency plans for everything. You know, when we talk about the Department of Education sort of as a label, I think it's easy to sort of lose sight of really sort of the humans that are affected. And so, for example, about 60% of our students are on financial aid, which is managed by the Department of Education. We have $33 million of Pell Grants coming into this institution, and so Pell Grants are a very critical part, not only of the way that many students like myself, like you just saw on the investiture, part of the reason that I'm chancellor is because of Pell Grants. Without Pell Grants, I wouldn't have been able to go to school. And many people that are in chancellor's cabinet will tell you the reason they're sitting in those chairs is because of Pell Grant. So, we don't, we don't have to be explained to the importance of Pell Grants because most of the people on chancellor's cabinet have lived the experience of being a Pell Grant recipient. So we have backup plans for financial aid. We have backup plans for the grant employees. We have backup plans for Pell Grants. We have, we have backup plans for everything. The reason that you won't hear me discussing them very often is because I think as the chancellor, the more I discuss the contingency plans, the more fear it may stoke, the more people may become worried of, okay, if the chancellor's always talking about it, then there's a real, very, very real possibility that this is where, where we're headed. But I wanted to sort of share with everyone that there are many administrators who are working behind the scenes and staff to make sure that if those cuts happen, that we will, we will survive them together and that we have resiliency built into our budget to do that. And if you remember, last year, we had a lot of issues with the disbursement of financial aid. And so I can tell you that we had about $23 million in financial aid set aside potentially and a plan to fund financial aid for students. And if the board will remember, I said if we can use reserves to build buildings, then we can use reserves to build dreams. And so we are fully prepared as an administration to come back to the board, and I know the board would be very supportive of dipping into those reserves if need be to weather whatever storm comes out of DC. And so I just wanted to sort of really publicly let you know that we're on top of it, and we've got a plan for every sort of component of the Department of Education that touches this institution. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, chancellor. Next item on the agenda is chancellor's cabinet, Lone Star College Online interim president Laura Bettenkort. Please proceed to the podium for your presentation.
Hello, Chair Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Castillo, fellow employees, students, and community members. Good morning. It's my pleasure to be with you today, and I'd like to invite you to join me for a brief tour of online teaching and learning within the Lone Star College community system, Lone Star College system. Sorry about that. It seems appropriate to start our tour with a trip down memory lane. If we look back to 1990, or as my kids call it, the 1900s, Lone Star College offered what would be considered its first online class. The internet was not accessible to the public yet, so these early classes relied on something called a bulletin board system, which required a student's modem to dial in and connect to the instructor's computer. The first class offered in this format was a computer science class out of Kingwood. However, the English faculty at North Harris were right behind them. We fast forward to 1999, and we have over 200 online courses being offered. The Center for Distance Learning is launched, and we see the first pledge to offer the Associate and Arch Degree fully online, and that's an actual picture of our webpage in 1999. And in 2008, we see LSCE College emerge, another system approach to collaboration, but this time the focus is on faculty training and student support. Since those first entrepreneurial faculty in 1990, we have only gained momentum over the last 35 years. Today, as Lone Star College serves over 91,000 students, we find that the majority of those students are taking at least one online class this semester. 33% are taking a mixed modality, which is a combination of on-campus and online classes. 40% of them, or 36,540 students, to be exact, are taking only online classes this semester. We know that most of them take online classes for the flexibility that it provides to their schedule. Most of our online students are part-time. They're juggling work and family responsibilities alongside their coursework. We also know that most are local, right here in our community. 99% of our online students are Texans. But we also know how mobile Houstonians can be, and online classes allow students to take us with them if life requires them to relocate. This semester, we have students taking online classes in 46 states. So every state in the nation is represented in our student body this semester, with the exceptions of Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Wyoming, and Montana. These students are supported by a wide range of services customized to online learning, library, tutoring, all of the wraparound services that we know are so important to our students are there for the online students as well. Instructional technologies provide a seamless experience in that online classroom. And it is within this supportive ecosystem that our faculty are able to do remarkable things. Now I'd like to take you on a quick little trip to our campuses to meet some of the faculty that are teaching online. At North Harris, we have Dr. Deborah Butts, who teaches health information technology, where students participate in a virtual practicum that integrates academic knowledge with practical skills and develops the essential competencies in a completely virtual environment. At Kingwood, Professor Jennifer Marquez teaches computer programming. In addition to normal programming assignments, she also asks her students to submit reflection papers where they analyze their problem-solving approach and explain how the use of artificial intelligence could optimize their coding skills. At Tom Ball, Dr. Tara Rupert developed the Occupational Therapy Practitioner Reentry Program. This innovative online approach is the only one in the country and has allowed individuals across the United States and one person in Europe to renew their occupational therapy license and practice in the field after stepping away. Continuing our tour, we head to Montgomery, where Professor Penny Landis ensures that students engage with design as a dynamic, hands-on discipline. She empowers students to develop not only technical proficiency, but also a problem-solving mindset that extends into professional practice. At Sci Fair, we find Professor Heather Cannon teaching students about mobile and web application development. She ensures her courses align with industry standards and effectively prepares them for an ever-evolving job market. Her innovations have led to great success in her virtual classroom. At University Park, Professor Cox teaches online courses in data analytics, where she draws on more than 20 years of experience as a statistician, primarily in clinical trials and healthcare policy research. This allows her to bring real-world experience into her virtual classroom. At Houston North, we find Professor James Johnson, teaching logistics management online, incorporating real-life case studies from FedEx and Amazon. This fall, he'll be implementing a live logistics dashboard, allowing students to track real-world global shipments using platforms like FlightAware and Marine Traffic. And lastly, we arrive at LSC Online, where Professor Lorraine Lopez helps students face their fears of math online. Her courses incorporate artificial intelligence to assess the student's knowledge and provide personalized learning modules based on their individual needs. She couples this tailored high-tech approach with a virtual environment full of support and engagement. And now for the highlight of our tour, I have the privilege, privilege of introducing you to a few of our online students. This is Lauren. Lauren is one of our success stories and a recent graduate of Lone Star College. Lauren has a number of rare diseases, including Ehlers-Danlos syndrome, which affects her connective tissue, her joints, her skin, as well as her immune system. Being able to take classes online opened a whole new world of opportunity for her to pursue her dreams. She faced some setbacks along the way, including multiple times of needing to withdraw to focus on her health, but she came back every time just as determined. She credits her instructors for her success, sharing that they went above and beyond to support her and restored her faith in humanity. She is now studying neuroscience so that she can help other people who are facing similar challenges. I would also like to introduce you to Mohammed. As Mohammed prepared to graduate high school and start college, his plans were interrupted when his grandfather suddenly became ill. His grandparents lived overseas, and he knew he needed to be with them, so he left Houston and thoughts of college behind to tend to his family. Two days after he arrived, he lost his grandfather and quickly became a caregiver for his grandmother. But Mohammed would tell you that amid the sorrow, a new passion emerged. Watching his grandparents battle illness ignited a fire in his heart. He realized that he wanted to be a doctor, not just to heal, but to provide compassion to families facing similar journeys. He began taking online classes with Lone Star College, which has allowed him to work towards his goal while caring for his family. He considers his instructors a lifeline despite being thousands of miles away. Now we have the pleasure of meeting Shauna, an aspiring educator. Shauna's getting close to graduation, and she's been able to stay on track in part thanks to our care program. She wasn't sure she was going to be able to continue last year when her home was flooded and her husband became ill. Thanks to the care program, we were able to provide her with emergency funding, community resources, and hope. The support she felt from Lone Star College allowed her to persist through that challenging time and find a new sense of strength within herself. And next up is Carlos. Carlos is a veteran here taking classes to pursue a career change. He signed up for online classes to accommodate his work and family schedule. When he started to feel overwhelmed last semester, a friend mentioned sometimes colleges have counselors that can help with stuff like that. So he Googled Lone Star College, online counseling, and within a few clicks was able to set up an appointment and see a counselor within two days' time. Carlos will tell you he credits his counselor with helping him achieve all As and Bs last semester, and would also tell you that if he had a billion dollars, he would give it to Lone Star. And lastly, we have Terry. Terry's a new student. She's with us in her first semester. She is originally from Louisiana and a mom to five kids. She's going back to school for the first time in 30 years, ready to invest in herself. She's studying business, and her ultimate goal is to write a children's book series that teaches kids about Cajun heritage. We may never meet these students in person, yet they know that they are not alone. They know that they have Lone Star College behind them. They know that they have Lone Star College behind them every step of the way. These students are going to do great things and we are very fortunate to be a part of their journey. I hope you've enjoyed your tour of online teaching and learning today. And on behalf of the employees of Lone Star College, we want to thank you for the support that you provide that allows us to help our students blossom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betancourt. Any questions before you leave, ma'am? Any questions or comments from either side? Okay, good. Appreciate your information and presentation. Thank you very much. Faculty Senate reports, next item, Professor Colby. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. Good morning and happy Oreo day to everybody, in case you didn't know. I also want to take a moment to recognize that we are now in Women's History Month and as an institution where the majority of our student body is female and the majority of our campus presidents are women, I would feel remiss if I missed that opportunity to recognize those individuals. So trustees, chancellor, community members, my name's Corey Colby. I'm the Faculty Senate President at Lone Star College Tomball and I'm a professor of political science. I'm also a graduate of Lone Star College, the Montgomery Campus, where I enrolled in 1999. So thank you, Dr. Betancourt, for recognizing that. So I'm excited to share with you this morning a unique experience that we as an institution offered to our students last week, a trip to the Texas Capitol during the legislative session. And I need to thank Mr. Kroll and Ms. Barnett and others who gave me a grace period to submit the presentation on Friday while y'all were at the retreat because of the timing of this trip. As you may be aware, L S C offers a degree in political science with articulation to our partner institutions. And this opportunity held great value for all of the participants, but it held a special depth for students who have declared as a political science major. As many of you are believers from your positions in local activism and civic engagement, this provided a special occasion for many of our students who are first gen from marginalized communities and other communities where they don't normally have opportunities to travel out of the region or to meet with their legislative representatives on their own. I haven't used this clicker before, so when we thought about this, I approached the Vice Chancellor of Marketing and Outreach in the summer to talk about what opportunities we could provide that are not international studies that would bring students closer to feeling self-efficacy and political efficacy. And so we look at the purpose here that research shows us that by strengthening civic engagement, especially with young people, we might be able to equip a critical mass of Americans with the tools they need to inject renewed sense of democracy. And you could go on to see the research also shows that this kind of participation is a driver of the self-perception of their ability to understand the process and influence change. So when I reached out to the Marketing and Comms Office, they actually embraced the idea really quickly. And I want to offer my thanks to the system leadership who put in resources, time and energy into making this happen for our students. So during this experience, it included travel to the Capitol during the session. Going, we talked about going to DC and growing the civic engagement. I also want to recognize Dr. Cotry, who presented last month, who is managing our Houston Endowment Grant, and Dr. Prince and Brandon Richardson for their help in making this chance a reality. And by the way, that's the cover of the, that's the cover of the handbook that all students and participants had on the way that helped prepare them for the day. So one of the things we want to make sure is that if we're using college resources, we are aligned in the work that we do in furthering the college's beliefs and goals. And we made sure, Dr. Cotry and I made sure that as we organized this, that we emphasized the college goals, the faculty qualities of excellence and the cultural beliefs of the institution. So many of our students come to us with these limited resources and past limitations on opportunity, that L S C has given a unique opportunity to provide experiences that build confidence, efficacy, and an expanded sense of opportunity. This experience was designed to reinforce the cultural beliefs, L S C goals, in fact, qualities of excellence. Specifically, the fact that we had students and faculty from all eight of our campuses who met with their own representatives and their staff was a unique opportunity. On this page, you can see two of the L S C Tomball SGA officers handing out breakfast, and yes, it is before dawn. The students left at 6:00 AM from the campuses for this opportunity. So as the chancellor has promoted and you all have expressed support, this also focuses on some of the strategic focus areas where we can have impacts on our students to help get us to the Aspen Institute recognition. And that is a ton of breakfast and the students were grateful for that. This group photo shows most of our students who participated on the trip. We took 119 students to the Capitol, which if any of you have any background on organizing a large group is no small feat. So we have 119 students representing all eight campuses. We actually had 13 faculty and four staff members who attended. This group shot also includes former Public Education Chairman Dan Huberty, who represents the college in Austin during the legislative session. Students, you could see this is afterward, so they spent all day roaming through the Capitol, all 10 floors of the Capitol, and they're still smiling here at the end. One of the things students were in wonder about, if you've ever been to the Texas Capitol, you can be two floors below the surface and still be light, and so they wanted to go out and check out this atrium area. You can see from the schedule here that we met, students were divided into groups based off of their home location. This was intentional because it made sure that our students in a group met specifically with someone who represents their home. So they knew that they were talking to, as constituents, people who represented their interest. The students were given no guidelines on what to say, simply that they should share their experience of Lone Star College and the impact that having these opportunities are affording them. I want to note that the students came from every imaginable degree area, workforce programs, students who are returning to college after a long period of time and more. In the, in the bottom picture here, you see Representative Bell, who was kind enough. He's the chairman of Intergovernmental Relations in the House. He represents the Magnolia area in South Montgomery County. And he made sure that while our students were in the gallery in the House to do a recognition of the work that Lone Star College System does and the impact that we have on the community. And they were recognized in the gallery from the floor of the House chamber during this visit. You can see the schedule is packed with meetings here. We met with 20 different legislators who both represent the college system and who represent influential positions on public education committees in the House and the Senate. And of course, you can note there also 20 minutes to go to the Capitol gift shop. So I want to make sure that you are aware, as the people who represent us on the board, of who we had a chance to visit with. And we visited with both representatives and their legislative staff, as well as the legislative staff on the Public Education Committee. And every single member of the legislature who met with our students talked about how impressive they were with how they represented the college, their experiences that they expressed, their ability to articulate meaningful questions that weren't just like, what's a day like? And to dig in to their own stories, to share their experience with these offices. And I personally felt like, as I went through the day and we would all group up, I would say, do you feel heard? Do you feel like this is having an impact? And students universally. Sorry, the video is actually skipping and Mr. Kroll and I talked about that, how it doesn't like to play here. So I will make sure that that gets said to you though. Here are the folks that really coordinated this experience. Dr. Prince and Brandon Richardson, I want to make sure they made the phone calls. They made sure that we got the buses. They made sure that we had funding. Dr. Cotry and I, as you have heard from both of us previously, coordinated the work. Jerry Marquez, who is helping manage the Houston Endowment Grant. And then you can see our professors from all of these campuses. And while he may not like it, actually Professor Friesen was my professor during my time at Lone Star College Montgomery as well. So that just shows the impact that our professors can have on our students. And then, of course, we want to recognize our photo and video team who traveled with us and who were the real heroes carrying around cameras and video equipment the whole day documenting our students' experience there. Sonia Rodriguez and Philip Chartran from L S C Tomball. So as I share these last pictures, by the way, there are so many photos and video from this event. I want you to look at the different experiences that our student had at the Capitol, the different individuals and the faces of these individuals and the impact that they had, not just the impact that it had, was had on them, but the impact that they had on the legislature. And I want to share some of their comments in the last 30 seconds that I have here. A student said, "The experience at the Capitol was really mind-blowing for me and opened my eyes on what I'm capable of doing with a political science degree. I believe it increased my interest in politics even more and it left this feeling of I want to live this life in me. I think it has improved my view of the organization of the college. It was already good, but I didn't know we had the capacity to host something as big as this. I feel proud of being here." And then lastly, I know that if I truly wanted to do something, having seen peaceful protesters, lobbyists and college students my age all coexist was a motivation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Colby.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Start down here, please. No? And this side, Trustee Wilson.
I just want to say thank you for taking them because that experience just changed their life for the future, for the better. So I appreciate you all getting together and taking them.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Anyone else? Trustee Mesa.
Let me also thank you, sir, also for doing this. And I see some of these offices were pretty packed. And I mean, 119 students, that's, that's, that's a lot.
Yes, sir.
We took 39 students yesterday to Austin, actually. And I thought we were doing good with that, so now we have a new number to beat. So, no, but thank you very much.
Public educators, we know how to make it happen.
Right, exactly. But no, thank you to yourself and to the rest of the team and to all the students for having gone too, because I think for them also, I think there is a factor of possibly intimidation or even imposter syndrome. Yesterday, while we were out there, one of the students, I saw that y'all had lunch on the lawn. The students saw families and people playing and they were like, is this public? And I said, this is public. I pointed to the Capitol building. I said, that's public, that's your building, all this is ours. So, you know, let's make the most of it. So thank you for doing this and I hope this could be a yearly thing. Well, the legislature meets every two years, but it could be a yearly thing or, you know. But yeah, no, thank you so much. And I think, you know, the rest of the board also thanks you and maybe we can join one of these days.
It'd be a pleasure, absolutely.
Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Saldivar? Any comments? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next move to Board Report, Board Member Reports, and then follow that with Board Committee Reports. And I'll start down here. Board Reports, Trustee Maria.
Yes, my committee, Goals and Evaluations Committee, met on February 26th. The board just comprised of committee members, Trustees Wilson, Rosart, Saldivar and myself. And we discussed the general framework and the timeline for carrying out this year's Chancellor's evaluation and compensation. The Board Retreat took place last Friday. Gave us plenty of material to work with, a lot of great insights, a lot of decisions and a lot of excitement all around it, we discussed later. But the, I think we, we, the primary thing is we establishing a timeline, kind of basing it on what we did last year, last year. So we're in a good place. So I shared with you guys sort of the report from last year, but just, just keep in mind so that you know kind of expectations or how you can contribute to those discussions. And feel free to reach out to any of the committee members if you have any other suggestions. But the good news is that I think we're, we're on time. As long as we meet those deadlines, that our committee will be choosing for, I mean, on those dates that we meet, we will be moving forward with, you know, the method, the tools and all that stuff for the meeting. So I think we're on track right now. So that's, that's pretty much my report.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Maria. Trustee Kane?
Thank you, sir. Back on February 13, I had the pleasure of attending the 10-year anniversary celebration for the Academy for Lifelong Learning, right here at University Park. Dr. Dempsey opened the program, welcomed everybody there. In addition to celebrating 10 years of that program here at UP, it was also an opportunity to honor Nancy Kroll, who opened that program during those years and did a fantastic job. That program is absolutely outstanding. And in the 10 years that it has been here at UP, I have been myself attending that program for most of those years. And you simply can't beat the price. You can take as many courses as you want in the course of two semesters for $25. That's absolutely remarkable. So I say that because those of you that know senior citizens like myself, who would enjoy taking those courses, I would hope that you would spread the word about that program. It's on every campus and I can't say enough good things about it.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Trustee Mesa? Thank you, Trustee Mesa. Trustee Saldivar?
Thank you, sir. I do have a special announcement. I know that a couple of minutes ago, earlier on, we watched a small video of the legislature of our chancellor. Do want to announce that the first person that you saw there, that was Representative Wally sort of mentioning and reading over the draft resolution that he drafted at the House floor. And so we want to be able to use that same resolution and appropriately recognize the chancellor and the Texas House of Representatives in the House chamber. And that's going to be next week on Wednesday, the 12th at 10:00 AM. And so we invite all of you, I know it's spring break, so we invite all of you, if you can, if you're driving along or close to Austin, just to stay for a while and be able to witness the recognition in the Texas House of Representatives for your chancellor. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Saldivar. Trustee Bo?
I want to thank you for the, our our, you and the chancellor, really. We had a real opening up of a number of things at our retreat last week. And I've, I've gone back in and been thinking about the the, the community connection that the chancellor has opened up for each of the trustees to consider. And I'd like to, I'd like to set up some time where the trustees can get together and talk about what each of us and see what we, what's sharing we can do amongst ourselves in developing those.
We can do that. We'll make sure that happens. We'll work with the administration to get that set up as part of one of our near-future meetings. Okay, sir. Thank you for the suggestion. Trustee Wilson?
Good morning. We're still in the morning. I want to say happy Women's History's Month, proud to be a woman, especially a woman of color. And I just want to say I appreciate all the women here at Lone Star from the top to the bottom because it's not an easy feat to be a woman. And I think sometimes people forget that. And sometimes we are overlooked and unthanked. So from me as a board member, from a woman to another woman in the room, listening online, even to the community, happy Women's History Month. And I also want to send my deepest condolences and prayers to Ashley Turner-Captain because she is a Lone Star family member and she is a Houston North Fallbrook family member, which is my district. Maryam and under, and Trustee Marilla under President Dr. Wright. And so just, I know that campus is probably really heavy and along with Lone Star. Dr. Wright. And so just I know that campus is probably really heavy and along with Lone Star family, but. I do want to just let y'all please tell Ashley that they she is in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you trustee Wilson trustee Stoma, any board comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you trustee Stoma. I have just a couple, um it's already been stated, but obviously we had a very successful and meaningful investiture for our chancellors. A pleasure and an honor to be there. Appreciate all the board members that took time to to be present as well. I also want to publicly thank uh the entire board for the productive board retreat we had last week. Uh we covered a lot of information. We heard a lot of great uh. Information from the chancellor about where we have been as an institution over the last year and where we are going this next year. Uh and I can tell you it's very exciting and motivating as well. So thank you chancellor, and thank you for board members for participating. Uh saw Nicole in the audience and there she is on the back row. It's funny how you can make eye contact with somebody in here so quick. Um I attended my first Lone Star College Foundation Board Meeting. I am your representative on the board. I attended, uh learned a great deal about what they're doing, and I think we need to appreciate the fact that the. Foundation worked so hard to provide resources, uh whatever they may be for student success as well as the uh. Uh faculty and staff of the institution as well, but also publicly thank those volunteer board members. That show up with ideas, listen, make commitments and help keeping the. Uh the mission of the foundation moving forward. So uh let's publicly thank them. I appreciate it. No other comments? Yes ma'am. Okay, let's go back this way if you don't mind. Uh trustee Maria, yes, now is this board report or board comment?
Well, this is a a report. Um I just want to make uh about the conference.
Okay, yes, sir.
Is that okay right now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, just um just I would be remiss if I didn't uh provide a a report and about the. The National Legislative Summit in Washington DC. Uh that brought together uh around fourteen hundred community college leaders. As to discuss pressing issues and opportunities for community colleges. As you can imagine, you know, there's just there's a sense of. Concern uh 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 great thing about this is you kind of get to talk to everybody and you kind of get a sense of how how everybody's dealing with. With concerns and stuff, but um the what it brings up what. One of the things about uh events such as the this one is that it highlights what how to communicate. Uh what we need to communicate as advocates, you know, and as uh really as educators in general. Uh about higher education. The importance of advocacy was emphasized. It's crucial to inform them about the community college role and needs and you know its impact on the community. And I I wanted to emphasize that because, you know, Chancellor Castillo. Dr. V N. And entire staff uh that that joined us did an amazing job, well structured, well organized. They presented. Lone Star College in such a positive light in a incredible, I mean, you could tell the. The response from our legislators that we met with, by the way, we we had, I've been on the board. More than ten years now and I. I have to, you know, uh uh you know, tell them how this was easily the best the best effort. That I've seen in in terms of this 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 uh this conference. You guys did your work uh and and sitting there with um. Uh congressmen and women uh and. And one of our senators Ted Cruz, uh Mario, you, I mean, I just watched you. Highlight what Lone Star College is and what it means to this community. I mean, you I just already told you this, you did an incredible job. I came out of there. I mean, you connected with the senator.
Thank you, sir.
You connected um he uh in terms of why um. We agree and everyone agrees that the job that everyone in this room does. And he was an excellent advocate. So I I like I said, I didn't I would be remiss if I didn't mention that because. The the issues are are crucial, right? The it's not something you you can't just wait until later. You know, these uh we came back and that um. Our chancellor has has and his staff has have been able to kind of reassure us about where we are. I mean, in terms of. Uh some of this federal funding and initially we 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 were more more worried. But I think the fact that they they communicate so well with us and with the community. Uh kind of reminds us that it's it's an ongoing process that we we need to continue doing. Or anyway, there were some discussions about some initiatives that the ACCT engages in and and. And 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 some of the resources they offer. Um so I always encourage everyone to uh leverage whatever information is available. Uh whatever your. And and a lot of folks that mentioned folks that worked for us or or came to work for us, you know, they say wonderful things. I mean, it's. It's great to to represent Lone Star College. I tell you what, I tell you this much. I I think uh trustee Mesa kind of immediately learned that a lot of people wish they were us. And so and 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 I say that not not in a, you know, well, and I'm saying it in a proud way, right? Uh because a lot of colleges are dealing with other challenges. But so 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 I I want to make sure that I congratulated. Our chancellor or commended him and his staff and 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 the board staff. I know that you've guys uh have been doing have a lot of preparation for for this, all these events. And being supportive. So also want to shout out for you, for all of you, each one of you. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you trustee Mario. Uh any other side on this side trustee Wilson, want to be recognized, yes ma'am.
Um like they mentioned before, we did have the board retreat and I want to thank um our chancellor for his um. Presentation and in his viewpoint of Lone Star and for the future. Because I think it's it's awesome, you know what I'm saying? And I and I appreciate the time that you and your staff put into doing the presentation. Because I know it can be daunting to have all that ready with the pressure and other things that go on with your job. Also want to thank Dr. V N because without Dr. V N, we wouldn't have the money. So. And I want to thank you for your transparency of the past, where we are now and where we're headed with the funding. And I think that's a very. Unappreciative job and I do have an associate's in accounting, so I'm very interested. But um I just want to thank you for all you you and your team for all your hard work and effort as well because. I know that had to be kind of nerve wracking to kind of tell people, okay, where's the money, what's going on with it and where's it going? So I want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you trustee Wilson. We'll now move to board committee reports. Trustee, I'm going to call, it'll be my practice um going forward. I'll call each committee at each board meeting. So we have ad hoc committee on policy review chaired by uh trustee Saldivar. Any comments? Okay, thank you. Chancellor goals and evaluation trustee Maria, you covered a lot earlier. Okay, thank you very much. Uh grievance committee trustee Wilson. Okay, thank you. Committee on committees trustee Kane.
We'll be getting a committee together very soon to look at technology.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I'm chair of audit and finance and we worked with the administration. We now have a date set for a committee meeting in March. All right, thank you trustees. Oh, excuse me, uh trustee Stoma, is there anything else before we move on through the agenda?
Nothing at this time. Uh of course I have issue on the consent agenda, but we're not there.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to consideration the consent agenda. We'll now move forward with the consideration of our consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion or removed from consideration? And I'll start to my right. I'll go to my left and then I'll call on anyone uh online. So any items to pull from the right?
No, I think y'all pulled twenty.
Okay, say that uh open turn your mic on please, number twenty. Nothing's pulled yet, so we're going to publicly pull items. So number twenty is pulled by trustee Wilson. Okay, uh go down this side. Any items to be pulled from this side of the board? Seeing none, okay. All right, item number twenty has been removed from the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for items one through nineteen? Have a motion by trustee Wilson, have a second please.
Second.
Second by trustee Mesa. Any discussion? No discussion? We'll now do a roll call vote on the consent agenda trustee Saldivar. Trustee Salvar, aye. Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson, aye. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Trustee Stoma, aye. Trustee Mesa.
Aye.
Trustee Mesa, aye. Trustee Maria.
Aye.
Trustee Maria, aye. Trustee vote.
Aye.
Trustee vote, aye. Trustee Kane.
Aye.
Trustee Kane, aye. Trustee Sullivan, aye. The item passes unanimously. We will now move to call item number twenty. May have a motion to consider item twenty. Have a motion by trustee Wilson, may have a second.
Stoma second.
Okay, uh Stoma second and we'll open the floor uh for discussion. Trustee Stoma, I'll call on you first because you've been last on the other rotations.
Okay, those those that shall be first shall be last, those that last shall be first.
Well, I can put you back at the end of the line. We'll start start to uh my right. Now, any uh questions or comments?
Well, I mean, do you do you want me to speak or not, sir?
Uh no, sir. You're going to the back of the line again. So trustee vote, any comments?
That's very professional, sir. Go ahead.
Trustee Wilson.
Um yes, I had a question because I know we got the resumes for the other candidates and then I seen the the vote. Vote cast list. Are we to do that now or is this for later? We have to pass it? Or like, how can you break down how this works? So I'll know how to what I'm.
Yes, ma'am, you bet. And it will help me as well. Uh I've asked our board counsel, uh Mr. Fressonette, to walk us through the the options and the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh very briefly, uh in past years, taxing units entities have directly appointed members to the appraisal district boards. Uh that has changed. We now have an election process. And so each taxing unit has a certain number of votes to cast, and those votes are cast by a vote of the governing body, the board. Lone Star is allocated two hundred and sixty votes for the Montgomery County Appraisal District Board. So so the college has two hundred and sixty total votes. Those can be allocated in different ways. They can uh the the board can choose to allocate all two hundred and sixty votes to a single candidate. Uh that appears on the ballot as part of this item. The board could also choose to divide those two hundred and sixty votes up between. More than one candidate appearing on the ballot. So that's what the statute tells us we have to do. It has to be done by March uh twenty one. Um and so um and and through resolution. So we do have to take action today. In order to to validly turn those uh votes over to the uh Montgomery County.
So does that mean that?
Turn your mic off, please.
Oh, yeah. So does that mean that we're about to do this now?
Yes, so you're going to decide today how to allocate your two hundred and sixty votes.
Okay.
The map, the method that you want to use.
Okay.
And to whom you want to allocate those votes. So your options. Are either one to to.
To one person.
Choose to allocate all of them to one person. If you choose to do that, that's a little more simple procedurally. That can be done by amending the standing motion to move to allocate all two hundred and sixty votes to candidate. Fill in the blank second and and approve it. If you uh choo- if the board chooses to allocate, split the votes up amongst candidates. Then we'll have to talk about how to make that happen. So I think the first question is whether the board wants to allocate all of its votes to a single candidate. If there's one candidate everybody seems to agree on, then we can proceed that way. Uh if the board wishes to split up the votes, then we can talk about how to. How to make that happen.
Okay, um just one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has any other candidate reached out to Lone Star besides Mr. Um Bruce tough?
Speaking only for myself, uh the only candidate that has reached out to me has been twice has been Bruce tough. Any other trustees contacted by any candidates? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, before we move forward, any other just uh questions or thoughts or comments on how we should proceed with? The votes, the allocation of the votes or any questions of board council? Trustee Kane, I see you pushing your button. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering uh. Chair, if 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 you had a recommendation.
Well, um you know, I do and I want to make sure that this is a board decision, first of all, and be very clear about that. I was fully prepared to cast votes on behalf of the full board because y'all had given me the authority to, but then the ballots arrived. And it enabled the administration, it was enough time the administration to put it on the agenda for today so that we could have a discussion in public. Uh I've re- I've um given my authority back, if you will, you know, on casting the sole vote on behalf of the board. Uh I was prepared to cast all uh two hundred and sixty, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Votes for uh candidate Bruce tough, who is an existing board member of the appraisal district. And that would have been my the action I would have taken. It is now collectively will come to a decision. Uh trustee Mesa.
And I just want to remind uh the board and everybody else that it is my understanding that uh the way these votes are. Uh doled out is that uh who the first five that get the most amount of votes will be on the board. And then the three that get the most out of the five will serve three year terms and then the other two will serve a one year term. Is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
You really read your backup material then, because that's very granular. It's really funny because I've been on the appraisal district board in Harris County. Uh and had to run, if you will, for a seat. And because I did the outreach that I did, I did obtain a three year term. Had I not.
Wow.
Made the outreach, I probably would have had a one year term, you know, so it matters. And the communication piece is important.
And then there's one more piece too that I actually had uh or wanted to seek clarification on is that as far as the taxing units, and I don't remember. The exact terminology, but there are certain types of taxing units whose votes uh are uh weighted more heavily. Um I can't remember conservation, I think was one of the words, and then there was another type.
There are some special type uh districts like reclamation districts in light that has their own set of rules for how they how the votes count. But for most of the taxing entities such as Lone Star, the votes are allocated based on the share of property taxes that that are levied by the. The entity. So the total taxes in Montgomery County and you take Lone Star's share and that's how you get to the two hundred and sixty. Uh proportionate votes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you trustee Mesa. Seeing no other uh comments of the board, uh chair recognizes trustee Stoma.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Uh one question's been answered. There are two hundred and sixty votes. There are a number of candidates. They're all very qualified. I mean, one specifically, it stands out as Misty Perrin or Perrine, depending how you she pronounces her name. Who is an incumbent and serving since December twenty two twenty two. The the concern I have is if you if you give two hundred and sixty votes to one candidate, you're most likely, it's probable. That you could swing the election for that one candidate. In that case, that candidate would be ingratiated to Lone Star uh for that uh vote. I know. Folks who would vote for me, I would certainly consider doing something for them if they were to ask me. Uh that their uh quid quid pro quo, maybe not as quick as as it could be, but. Somewhere along the lines, there is a uh opening for this candidate to. Come back and ask for something either of the chair or or the college. Uh so my my recommendation, since we got two hundred and sixty votes. Why not just spread them equally across all candidates? This makes it fair and uh it does not skew it one way or the other. For one candidate. Um it keeps the adversity uh certainly for our our dispersion of votes. And I I think that's a fair way to do it. Uh versus taking one candidate and giving all the votes to one candidate, which is a significant amount of votes. If it were me, I would amend it to have Misty Perrin be all the two hundred and sixty. But I think the fair thing to do is just equally spread them across the candidates. That way we've we've covered our duty. We have uh voted uh as good citizens and uh we have affected whatever outcome there is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh excuse me, uh trustee Stoma, any board comment um in response to to that? Uh trustee Wilson. board comment, um, in response to, to that? Uh, trustee Wilson?
Yes, um, we could split them all across, but who else asks for our support in the vote? And campaigning one oh one, if you don't ask, you can't assume that somebody's just gonna vote for you because you put your name in the hat. You have to ask people for their vote to let them know that, hey, I did think of you. People appreciate when you reach out to them and say, hey, you know, do, would you mind voting for me? Or do you think I could have your vote? Or could you bring it to the person who has the vote? This is just my opinion. As somebody who's run campaigns, worked on campaigns, you have to ask for the vote. You can't assume it's yours just because you put your name in that. That's just my opinion.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Wilson. Any other thoughts or comments? Uh, trustee Maria?
I think, I think perhaps in the future we can, uh, discuss, um, getting more information about other candidates. I mean, we've all had, we had that opportunity. I didn't do it, but, um, but, uh, just spreading our votes like that, it's might as well not, not, not submit any, because it's, if you spread it out equally, basically it's right, like, right, nobody's gonna, it's not gonna make an impact. So, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I think we, we wanna consider other options like spreading our vote or deciding one way or another. Maybe that's something we can think about, uh, in the future, but um, the reason I don't, uh, I don't think it's a you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to do it this way is because it's the same thing as not submitting a, a vote, I guess.
Okay, thank you, trustee Maria. Trustee Mesa?
I don't, I mean, I don't want this to be more complicated than it has to be, and I don't want to make it more complicated than it has to be. Um, I acknowledge trustee Wilson's point. I think she makes a good point. And I'd be, and beyond that, I know you, Chair Sullivan, uh, uh, it seems like you, you know, believe in, uh, Mr. Bruce, Bruce Tough as, as the candidate. I, um, I think he has a lot of good experience, so I'm not against giving him a majority of votes or even all votes, if that's what the board agrees to. I just wanna, uh, mention, because I know trustee Stoma mentioned, uh, Ms. Misty Perrin. Um, one name that caught my eye, and it just depends on how the board feels about this, was, uh, Dr. Jerry Nash. Uh, as far as reading his, um, his information, as far as like his resume, I'd say, and I looked him up on LinkedIn, read some articles about him. Um, and then I did see, uh, Misty Perrin. She did, uh, catch my eye as well. Um, but I don't feel, um, too strongly either way. I would, uh, defer to the board and to you as the chair. So as I mentioned, uh, I would be in favor of giving, uh, Mr. Tough either all the votes or majority of the votes, but if anybody else on the board, I know, uh, trustee Stoma mentioned Misty Perrin. If anybody else, uh, would like to give her some votes, or even Dr. Nash, um, I just want to throw that out there that I would be in favor of, of that. And like I said, I don't want this to be more complicated than it has to be, but uh, that's, that's my, uh, perspective on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Mesa. Any comments on this side? One thing we might need to think about ourselves as a board is that we're gonna have to do this again in a year. So I, I don't know what the perfect process is for us so that we're, we don't sit it up at the table. Not that there's anything wrong with this, but I mean, it'd be good to have some type of process in place where we would receive, hopefully in a timely manner from MCAD, not at the last minute, hint, hint. Um, to get us the information on the candidates so that we can have some type of vetting process ourselves to arrive at a, um, thoughtful recommendation, uh, how we cast our votes. I think we are the fifth largest number of votes with, uh, with the appraisal district, probably behind the county, the city, school district. Uh, and I don't know the fourth one, but so it, it's important that we, that we get it right, uh, this time and going forward. So so we don't have to do this again. We, we'll come up with a process. Uh, so if there's no other discussion, uh, from any other trustees, uh, could you tell us, Mr. Frasenat, where we are and what our options are?
Well, we're at the point where somebody can make a, a motion to amend, because we have, we have a motion on the table that is simply to adopt the resolution, but we need to amend that motion to specify how you want to do it. So again, the most simple is if, if the board wants to allocate all votes to one candidate, somebody could make a motion to, uh, move to amend uh, to cast all votes for candidate, fill in the blank.
That's a Stoma. I, uh, would like to make a, uh, a motion to amend. And the amendment would
You're right.
Go ahead, sir.
No, I, I want to make a motion to amend. Should I tell you what the, what the amendment would be?
Yes, sir. Floor's yours.
Uh, I would, I would make a motion to amend, to allocate the votes between Misty Perrin and Bruce Tough. You can do it equally or sixty forty. I have no preference on that.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Stoma. I do think we need to have a, we need to have it clear on the record which way we're voting on that, um, that split, so.
Okay, so to give Bruce Tough, uh, consideration based on his reaching out to Lone Star through Chair Sullivan, though, give Bruce, uh, Tough sixty percent and Misty Perrin forty percent.
Okay, sir. Uh, Chair Stoma, I heard you. I wrote it down, and let me ask Mr. Frasenat what the next step would be. Do we need a second?
We do need, we need a second to the motion to amend, as I understand it, the motion to amend is to allocate the two hundred and sixty votes, uh, sixty percent of those to Mr. Tough and forty percent of those to Ms. Perrin.
Okay, so we'll, we'll need a second, and then would there be discussion as well?
There could be discussion.
Okay.
On, on the amendment.
Yes, we have an, an amendment on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Kane. I'll now call for discussion. Is that proper, Mr.?
That is correct, and limited to the amendment itself, so the allocation of the votes.
Okay, um, I have not spoken, so I'll take this opportunity, if you don't mind, trustees. Uh, I'm, I support that. I don't object to that at all. Uh, so I'll be voting to support the amended motion. Uh, any other comments or thoughts?
Just one, one other thought. Just one other thought, Chair. Uh, I think by voting for Misty Perrin, it keeps a diversity on the MCAD board. And any, any place there's diversity, it's a better board, as we know.
Okay, sir. Thank you for that. Uh, trustee Mesa, were you trying to catch my eye?
Yes, thank you. I had a question. I guess maybe this is more of a procedural question, but um, because if you look at the agenda on the iPads before us on page fifty-three of sixty-three, the ballot's right there, right? So is that, the, is that the ballot that we're amending, considering that it starts off at zero? And then what we're amending is the votes that we're allocating? And then who is the presiding officer in this case?
Yes, Mr. Mesa, once the vote is taken, we know how the votes are allocated. They will be, the ballot will be completed in accordance with that vote, so it will be filled out to, to reflect the vote. So in this case, um, if it's sixty forty, tho, those will be calculated and built in for, uh, the two candidates, Tough and Perrin. And, and procedure, I want to be clear, since this is a motion to amend, you'll have to take two votes. You'll take the motion to amend. Uh, if that passes, then you will act on the main motion as amended, so it'll be two votes under Roberts.
Good. Thank you for walking us through that. Uh, any other comments, any other thoughts? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the amended motion to allocate sixty percent of the votes to candidate Tough and forty percent of the votes to candidate Perrin, if I'm not mistaken.
Chairman, just so the record's clear, the vote is on the motion to amend, the main motion. And then we'll take a vote on the, if it passes, the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Let me dumb it down for me then. Uh, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on the amended.
On the motion to amend.
The motion to amend. Okay. Bear with me as I pull out a, a calendar sheet.
Can I ask one more procedural question?
Uh, yes, sir, trustee Mesa.
So if, when, if the emotion to amend passes, then the second vote is if we want to do this vote allocation?
It, it's essentially to finalize the allocation sixty forty between the two candidates. Correct.
Okay, and then just depending on how that goes, if it were to not pass, we would have to come back and decide on another vote allocation.
Have to come, come back and start up, start over.
Okay. But the first process, no matter what, is to do the motion to amend. That way we can insert it, put the numbers, you know, the
Correct.
Of the votes. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mesa. Any other questions before a new roll call vote? Seeing none, uh, when I call your name, please say, uh, yes, no, or abstain. Trustee Salavar? Thank you, trustee Salavar. Trustee Wilson? Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Broussard's absent. Trustee Stoma?
Yay.
Thank you, trustee Stoma. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Mesa. Trustee Maria?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Maria. Trustee vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee vote. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Kane. Trustee Sullivan, yes. The item passes, you, the amended motion passes unanimously. And, Mr. Frasenat, you already told us, but if you could tell me again.
So, so now the new motion, uh, is to allocate the vote sixty forty to, sixty percent to Mr. Tough and forty percent to Ms. Perrin. So you take a, a vote now on the amended motion.
Okay, good. May I have a motion?
So move.
Stoma, thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, bear with me as I get another sheet, please. This will be the motion itself. Thank you. Have a motion by Kane. Have a second by Stoma. All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Salavar. Well, do I need to ask for discussion, Philip?
You can have discussion, but you can also just, if there's no discussion, you proceed with the vote.
I'm gonna proceed with the vote unless anyone objects. Trustee Salavar. Thank you, trustee Salavar. Trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson votes yes. Thank you. Trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Yay.
Stoma votes yes. Thank you. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Uh, Mesa votes yes. Thank you. Trustee Maria?
Yes.
Maria votes yes. Thank you. Trustee vote?
Yes.
Trustee vote? Vote, yes. Thank you. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Trustee Kane votes yes. Thank you. Trustee Sullivan, yes. The item passes unanimously. Good discussion. Thank you very much, trustees. And I'll leave it up to the administration to fill out the forms, have them properly sign today.
Yes, sir. Before we leave today, um, my staff has instructions to get this executed.
Okay, and who needs to sign, just so we?
It's the presiding officer, which would be you, sir.
Okay, so I'll make sure that I hang around and sign, uh, the paperwork for this, and then we'll leave it up to the administration to deliver to MCAD by the appropriate deadline.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Frasenat, thank you for your assistance on that. You appreciate it. And as I said, we'll, we'll figure out a nice, smooth way to do this going forward. I appreciate the inputs and the, um, the engagement from the trustees. Appreciate it, I really do. Next item is the financial report. Dr. Vien, uh, probably thought we weren't gonna get to you today, so the, the floor is yours.
And thank you, Chair. Thank you, trustees, for the opportunity to present, uh, this month's financials. Um, if I'm honest, I always am a little jealous of my colleagues like Professor Colby and, uh, Dr. Betancourt, who get to talk about all the fun, exciting things that they're doing. Uh, and I get to talk about all the numbers and, and the being counting, if you will. Uh, but I do want to acknowledge, uh, all the hard work and for sharing those stories, and I add that because, you know, when we've had a hard day or we've had difficult things, those are the stories that really refill my bucket, and it really says, that's really what it's all about. And so I do want to acknowledge all your hard work and for helping me, uh, to be reminded of what's important and why we're here. Um, even though, uh, Dr. Betancourt, uh, I now have the dial-up sound in my head since you presented, uh, because I was one of those nineteen hundreds kids in my first job in higher education. Um, and as the chancellor said, um, I also would not be standing here as your CFO without a Pell Grant and student loans. So for what it's worth, I also want to recognize, uh, that I also have a strong passion for that, because again, without that, you would not have the CFO that you have today. So just wanted to, for what it's worth, add that, and, uh, I've already made a note for those, uh, the students for next year. So. All right, so now that I've dated myself and made myself feel old, we will get into the meat of, of all the things. Uh, excuse me. All right, sorry. Backwards, you think I had done this before. Okay, so, uh, in addition to our financial report that is our standard report, we will have some additional slides at the end, um, but I'm gonna go ahead and jump right in to our financial statements ending January thirty first. So when you're looking at our year-to-date actual revenues, again, just reminding that this is only through January thirty first, you can see that our state appropriations at that time, uh, represented fifty-seven million dollars of the, uh, budgeted amount. We also have tuition and fees of a hundred and thirty-three million, taxes of a hundred and ninety-six, and then investments of seven million. And then you can also see the additional, uh, categories there. So again, still tracking appropriately for the month ending of January. So when you're looking at expenditures, we again continue to track, um, our categories. So salaries continues and will always continue to be our number one expenditure, uh, for the most part at a hundred and sixteen million, employee benefits at seventeen million, and services of twenty-eight million, uh, for month end, January thirty first. Again, when we show this chart, it is just a different variation of looking at, um, our actual revenues. And what this slide is important is because it actually shows actual revenues, um, as it relates to the overall budget and in past years. So of the five hundred and thirteen million dollars for revenues projected for this fiscal year, we have received seventy-seven point three percent of those projected budgets. And again, that is still, uh, way ahead of schedule, right where really, really we should be. Uh, but it's always good to have seventy-seven percent of your budget, um, still this early into the fiscal year. So, uh, just kind of pointing that out. Looking at expenditures, uh, we are trending a little bit down in terms of how much we have spent year-to-date in compared to, uh, previous years. Again, it's no sign of issue or anything like that, just again, continuing to be conservative stewards of our dollars. Um, but we have spent thirty-five point one percent of our budget through, uh, the period ending in January. Uh, and I apologize, I don't know why those slides are kind of, if it's showing that way on yours as well. It's a little cut off, but you should have this information in your packet. Uh, when you're looking at the phys, financial statements, uh, really when you're looking at the overall, uh, again, nothing really significant to highlight for the financial ending in January. Um, in February, we will start to see some additional trends, because we will have additional payments, um, from state appropriations and even taxes at that time. So, um, no significant items to note there. And then we're looking at the, uh, expense categories for that as well. Again, nothing significant really since the last reporting period, uh, for the financial statements for ending in January. In your additional packet, you do have a balance sheet. You have your statement of revenues and expenditures, which also includes the Fund Thirty-Five Harvey Recovery Fund. You also have a summary of our investments. And again, we have not received any additional funds from Harvey since the last board meeting report. As requested by the board, we're also continuing to show you our cash reserves, um, our cash reserves according to our definition, still remains at a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars, um, for this fiscal year, um, as a definition of the term. Again, just a reminder for the board that that does not include our set aside amount. Sorry. All right. So in addition to the, uh, standard presentation that we have this month, it is actually required by board policy that we do, uh, present our, uh, ACFA to you, which is our annual comprehensive financial report. So can I get some assistance from the team when I'm transitioning? It's not.
So Chair, if I may?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Vien, while they walk up here, um, just wanna, I wanna highlight a couple of things. Um, you know, a lot of times, we, we spend a lot of time in this meeting talking about what's in the agenda. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about what's not in the agenda, right? So March is usually when we would announce recommendations to the board with regards to tuition increases. And there's, why is there no such item in the board in March for a tuition increase?
Uh, because we're recommending to not increase tuition and fees, uh, for the FY twenty-six year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Happy to answer any questions on that. So what we are gonna jump into now is the summary of our annual comprehensive financial report. Um, you should have received a digital copy, trustees, as well as you should have an additional physical copy in front of you. Um, I promise not to go through all one hundred and fifty-eight pages of the document unless you would like me to. We can dig in. Uh, but when we look at, uh, the document, really, I'm just gonna go briefly through a couple of these items, and then we will also hear from our external auditors, who will give you their prepared report, uh, as well. So one of the things that I always like to highlight when we give the ACFA is that when we, we talk a lot about the budget. The budget now is the current budget that we're in, as well as a future budget. So the budget is what we think will happen. It's what we plan to have happen. It is a scenario that we hope to achieve. The ACFA, when we talk about that, it's important for you all to understand, it has what did actually occur. It is in past tense. So when we're talking about the ACFA, it is from the previous fiscal year. It, everything was a snapshot in time that ended the August thirty-first period. Um, but it does, you can't always take the budget, or you cannot take the budget in the ACFA and compare those items, uh, because there's a lot of things that come through the ACFA that are not in the budget. So I always just like to make that kind of as a, as a caveat, if you will, um, just to make sure that we're aware of that when we're looking at those two items. So just jumping in, we're gonna give some brief definitions, some net positions. We're gonna talk about some key We're going to talk about some key components of the one hundred and fifty-eight page document that you have in front of you, as well as the audit report and then the corrective action. And then again, we'll, we'll hear from our external auditors, and they can answer any questions on behalf of the process or for the board. So when we talk about the ACFA, and again, a lot of this I've already alluded to, is it is an annual comprehensive financial report, it is what happened during that fiscal year. We must submit as a system an ACFA to the coordinating board by December thirty-first of each fiscal year. It is a requirement per the Texas Administrative Code. So when we're talking about the ACFA, it really is a comparative statements, notes, and schedules about the previous fiscal year, as well as it does, as I've indicated, allude to the report from our external auditors on their findings. So as part of good stewards, not only do we prepare reports, we work on the process, but we do have external auditors who come in and make recommendations, take a look to make sure everything is, you know, on the up and up, and everything is where it should be, and make recommendations to our team on how we could do that better. So Lone Star is what we, what is defined as a special purpose government engaged in business activities, and we, because we do provide educational services. So again, that may not be truly significant for others, but again, there are various categories, and that is the category that we fall into based off of really our purpose, if you will, which is to educate our students. So when we look at our statement of net position, these are really just the definitions of terms when you see the chart, so you're a little bit more familiar with that. At the back page of your ACFA, are those definitions or some additional definitions? So if you're following along, they're in one, one fifty-seven and one fifty-eight of that, which gives you some additional definitions in case that is of helpful or interest to you. So when we talk about the statement of net position, it really is our balance sheet. So that's just a fancy way to kind of talk about our balance sheet. And it really is, the primary purpose is to present our statement of net position, and again, at that statement or at that point in time. So when we talk about statement of revenues and expenditures, it really is the income statement for a governmental entity. So it does help you as the reader, when you're going through the ACFA, understand and evaluate the current year revenues. Were we, did we have sufficient revenues, did we have sufficient resources to pay our bills? Like, how healthy are we as an organization? And to understand the cost of actually providing those services and goods, and to understand how the system finances its programs. And of course, as we know, that the majority of our, our revenue or the largest percentage does come through tuition and V revenue. And so all of that is highlighted in our statement of revenue and expenditures. You will hear me mention unmodified and qualified opinions. An unmodified opinion is a clean report. Of course, that's what we want to do, so that's the A-plus, if you will, for our, our students in the room. We want to get an A-plus unmodified opinion, and that's the most favorable type of opinion given in any audit report. A qualified opinion is a less favorable than an unqualified, and it's where the auditor may have identified material misstatements or has determined that a misstatement is not widespread. So those are the two definitions that I would want you to specifically be aware of as we give the full report. So just kind of going back to that date, that definition of statement of net position, a snapshot in time of all of our assets, plus deferred outflows of resources, less liabilities, plus deferred inflows of resources. Okay, so again, for our, our, doing the math in the room, that's the formula that gets us to our statement of our net position. And what we look at is where we were ending August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, where we were during the fiscal year of twenty-four, and where we ended in August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. So that gives you our, what we call our net position, which for year ending two thousand and twenty-four was five hundred and five, and five hundred and five million dollars as a net position. I also specifically call to you that we are required to list our ten years of that period in time, and so you can see how that has tracked through the various years in the last ten years as it relates to assets minus liabilities equals net position. So just pointing that out, that that is on the right-hand side, just the general summary of where we are. So in short, we're in a good position, that is always a favorable number to have. So when we're looking at our statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, you can see here that it really is, again, it's the income statement. So this is our income statement. You can see for two thousand and twenty-four, our operating revenues, one twenty-four, operating expenses, five forty, operating loss, four sixteen, non-operating revenue, five thirty-seven, for net income of one twenty-one. So again, as you can see, when we're looking at the revenues minus expenses, again, what our net income is, and you can also see on the right-hand side, our ten-year history. You can see the lowest point in our net income was in two thousand and twenty, and which was directly resulted from COVID and, and our experience during that time. There was a significant increase in net income in two thousand and twenty-four due to non-operating revenues, and specifically related to an increase from property taxes and state appropriations. So I did want to highlight those two specific items for you as we talk about our net position. So the chart that you're looking at now is a breakdown of total revenues for the college. You see these every month when we give our financials. Again, these percentages are different, because when we have the ACFA, we actually include all revenue sources, not just the revenue sources we budget. So these charts and these percentage do highlight grants and other revenues that we do not include in the budget. So again, that's why I always tell folks, when you're comparing budget next to ACFA side by side, the percentages won't align, and because this is going to take into account additional grants and items that we receive. But again, in either scenario, property taxes, again, remains our highest percentage of overall revenues, that has not changed. So when we're looking at our breakdown of total expenses for the college, you can see here as well, the breakdown. And again, our largest expense is instruction, which for ending two thousand and twenty-four was twenty-eight point four percent of our budget. And typically, we use a hundred percent of our state appropriations that we receive for instructional expenses. So that's important to note, it is our highest expense, and our state appropriations a hundred percent goes to cover that category. So when we're looking at this chart, what we are looking at is our cash, cash flow position. So that really demonstrates the system's ability to operate short-term and long-term on how much cash is flowing in and out of the system. So if we stopped getting revenue tomorrow, how long could we continue to operate? How long could we continue to, to pay our bills? So that's why cash flow is extremely important to us as an institution, and we always have to monitor what those cash flows are, so we can make sure that we are able to pay the bills and to handle our expenses as they come in. And so again, looking at the bottom line here, our cash flow position ending August thirty-first was four hundred and seventy-three million dollars. And you can see, again, the ten-year history of that has continued to evolve. And again, this has been the highest of our cash flow position with four hundred and seventy-three million dollars. So again, just looking at cash flow, cash inflows minus cash outflow, outflows equals our net cash flow position. And again, ending two thousand and twenty-four, we had a net cash flow position of one sixty-two. When we're looking at our balance sheet, which is a component of net position, again, we have a five hundred and five million dollar net position related to our balance sheet. And again, that looks at net investments of capital assets, our expendable restricted funds, our expendable debt service, and our unrestricted, which gives us a net position of five hundred and five million dollars, which is a difference of a hundred and twenty million from the previous ACFA ending in two thousand and twenty-three. So looking at, kind of jumping forward in, in the document to the audit findings, and again, I don't want to steal our external auditor's thunder, but we will address that there were really three opinions here. In related to financial statements, we received an unmodified opinion, so there was no significant deficiencies reported and no material weaknesses identified. For federal awards was the same, we had unmodified opinion, no significant deficiencies, and no material weaknesses. We did have one qualified opinion that I would like to make sure that the board is aware of, and that was related to state awards. So while no significant deficiencies were reported, there was a material weakness identified for our TEOG program. And so just as a reminder, the material weakness is defined as a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in an internal control such that there is reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of an entity's financial statements could occur that would not be prevented, detected, or corrected on a timely basis. So we did have one qualified opinion or material weakness identified for our TEOG. And if you want to look at the details of that specific area, it does start on page one forty-nine of the ACFA, and it highlights those specific items. For your specific purpose of TEOG, just a reminder, that's our Texas Educational Opportunity Grants. The purpose of the, the grant is to provide financial aid to eligible students attending to your institution. The maximum award is seventeen eighty-six per term or five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight a year. Institutions are required to cover the cost of tuition and required fees that exceed the TEOG award using institutional or outside, outside resources, regardless of whether the student is an in-district or out-of-district student. And the external auditors did identify that we had inconsistencies as a system with our matching calculation of when reviewing a sample of the TEOG student population. So I am, you know, even though it's never great to have an identified, you know, item that comes up, we really did, as soon as the item was identified, I'd like to recognize the collaborative effort that went in from Dr. Napolos's area and the financial aid team, as well as the Student AR teams to quickly identify the issue and work to immediately put in a corrective action to not only ensure that we corrected that situation, but we put in key identifiers and metrics to, to make sure that this did not happen going forward. So a full review of that process was completed in December of two thousand and twenty-four, December twelfth, to be exact. And additional staffing and training will be provided going forward to ensure that these compliance issues are addressed in, in the future. And again, going forward, we will have monthly reviews conducted by the financial aid team of this specific program, and ensuring that they are receiving matching calculations. So again, while it's not great to have that, I would like to applaud the teams that immediately jumped, jumped in to correct the item and to ensure that we do not have that issue for our students going forward. So I would like to thank the following individuals who assisted with the ACFA. Trustee Wilson, it was so gracious of you to acknowledge all the hard work that goes into that. And while I cannot take the credit, because there is a lot of folks that work very hard and diligent behind the teams and the accounting, the grants accounting, the student financials and treasury teams. Specifically, I'd like to recognize Valerie Cott, Liesel Schmidt, Letitia Baptiste, Craig Price, Robin Reesbeck, Maria Correll, Donna Hammond, Katie Holloway, and Nissa Peterson, for all of their hard work on putting this labor of love together, if you will, because you all don't get to see it until March necessarily, but there is a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes, including this team working through December and the holidays to get that submitted by the December thirty-first timeline. So I would like to, so thank you for the opportunity to recognize those individuals who did spend some of their holiday continuing to work on this doc, this document. So as I've alluded to, next year, we'll hear from our external auditors with Forbes Mazars, who will explain their audit process and discuss their audit report. And while I'm waiting for them to come up and introduce them, I'm happy to address any questions the trustees may have for me specifically.
Yeah, any questions, trustees, questions, comments? If, is this the report that you're recognized by a state agency like twenty-four years in a row or something?
We have had several awards and things, so it could possibly be. We have not necessarily been recognized for this item, but in the past, we've been recognized for several governmental awards.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the, or is not that?
This specific year was not, sir.
Okay, any reason?
We did not submit for that this year, sir.
Any reason?
Yes, there, there's a lot of time and attention that goes into that, and it's a word that you actually have to pay to submit for, and it's a lot of time and effort on the team. And I let them actually vote as a group if it was important to them to continue, and as an internal team, the, the budget award, so. Well, we, okay, so my team is telling me they did get the award for this particular one. The budget was the one we did not submit for the award, so.
Okay.
Sorry, see, I have to have a good team behind me, and they, they correct me all the time.
Right. But at, at an appropriate time in the future, please let us know that you've won the award, so we can recognize you from the board table.
Yeah, well, happy to do that.
Yeah, good, thank you, yes, ma'am. And our four of us partners, if y'all would step forward and introduce yourselves, I know who you are, but.
Okay.
Please.
Good afternoon, trustees. I'm Angie Dunlap, and I'm the audit partner with Forbes Mazars for your audit this year. This is our second year on the audit engagement, and then I have with me also Erica Brown, who I called her the field general, because she's the one in the field on a day-to-day basis with our team to perform this audit. So we are here today to basically kind of give the results of the audit. Actually, Dr. VN teed up a lot of this information already, so there may be a little bit of duplication in, in what we say, but she gave some really good information and some context and with respect to the audit this year. So from our perspective, we do this audit, basically kind of starting in the summer with interim field work and then come back in October, November timeframe through December to actually get the audit completed and issued on time to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, which was done this year. And as Dr. VN indicated, we have issued unmodified opinions on the financial statements for Lone Star College System for the year ended August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and two thousand and twenty-three, as they are comparative financial statements. And those financial statements were fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards, which is the next thing that we have on this slide, is we do issue a, a report on internal control over financial reporting, as well as a report on internal control over compliance. And so Dr. VN kind of alluded to this in terms of the fact that we do audit the federal and state funding that the college receives. And so we issue separate reports on those, because there are different guidelines that we have to follow in that regard. And so as she mentioned, we did have an unmodified opinion on internal control over compliance with respect to the major federal award programs, and we primarily tested the Student Financial Aid Program that the college receives. And then we did issue a qualified opinion as it related to specifically just the Texas Educational Opportunity Grant. So it's not a qualification in its entirety for the state funding, but as it relates specifically to that grant and as it relates to specifically to matching. There are other compliance requirements that we have to review when we do these audits. So it's real kind of a narrow, so I don't want you guys to think that, you know, there's a qualification as it related to the overall funding that was received by the state. And so that was kind of like a high-level summary, and then we'll get into a little bit of detail on some of the other aspects of it. So one of the things that was also mentioned is that we, we perform the audit, and then there's a component unit of the college, which is the foundation. And that is also encompassed in that report that you've received. We do not audit the foundation, but we rely on the auditors of the foundation with respect to the work that is done for the fair presentation of the foundation as well. So that is included in our report, and you would see in our opinion that we specifically make reference to the other auditors in that regard. And so as stated, we do perform audit under government auditing standards. We issue those separate reports with respect to the internal control over compliance as it relates to the financial report, and we did not have any findings with respect to the financial reporting aspects of the organization. And then we do those separate reports as it relates to the federal funding. And so that's looking at the expenditures of your federal awards as well as your state awards. And then Erica's just going to cover a couple of other things that we are required to communicate with you as well.
Thanks, Angie, and Angie didn't mention, we had already sent you all this. Our presentation, I think, back in January, it has a lot more, that what was sent has a lot more detail, if y'all need that for reference, we kind of pared it down for our presentation today. But as it relates to the financial statements, we didn't notice anything unusual, no unusual policies or methods. There were no alternative accounting procedures done, no judgments or anything like that. There are a lot of estimates in the financial statements, and so we do look at those specifically just to make sure that the estimates are reasonable. And so then the next slide does kind of go into some of those estimates, and we didn't find anything unreasonable with those estimates as a part of our test work. And we do just. Um, and we do just like to call out a couple of the note disclosures that are significant, um, and that does include the revenue recognition and also the determination of the fair values. And then as it relates to our audit adjustments, so we did not have any proposed audit adjustments that were recorded, but we did have three audit adjustments that we proposed, and the team passed on recording those. Um, from our perspective, those are what we call above our adjustment scope, um, but they were not material enough to warrant essentially making management record them. Um, and management themselves, uh, assess the adjustments and determine that they didn't, also did not think they were, there were material enough to record as well. Um, one of them just relates to debit balances that are in the accounts, the student accounts payable, um, line. It's essentially student accounts receivable i- is what it, it boils down to. Um, they just show that as net, um, so we just had an adjustment to pull those out. Um, the second relates to the T D M revenue, um, which kind of goes back to Harvey. Um, there the revenue, um, there was some revenue that was received this year from T D M that related to, uh, like past Harvey stuff, um, and so that revenue was uh, recorded in the current year. And then there was no receivable recorded for future revenues that will be received by T D M. And so we have an adjust, we had a past adjustment to essentially record a receivable for what the college thinks they have left to receive from T D M relate, related to Harvey. And then also to record that revenue in a prior year, that revenue should have been recorded, um, I think in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, so. And then, um, the last one is just related to the debt refund. There was debt that was refunded slash paid off this year. Um, and the interest was kind of erroneously recorded, um, in the current year. And it wouldn't, it shouldn't have been interest because the, the debt was, was paid off. That was a lot. Any questions on any of those before I move on?
Yes, I do. Uh, any thoughts or questions at this point? How unusual is it to have three items like this, uh, considering the size and scope of our operation? And what are your initial thoughts and recommendations? Were these avoidable? Uh, are there any fixes? What do we do?
Um, I think three is, is reasonable. I mean, uh, I think we, I personally don't have any, but I know we have some clients at our firm that have.
Angie, you're trying to step forward. Yeah.
Yeah, no, this, this is not unusual. And then if you think about this first, the first one, which is a reclassification of debit balance and A P, you know, that's a management decision, um, you know, to recognize that as net versus kind of, I would say grossing up, you know, the balance sheet. So that's not unusual. From our perspective, because it's over our adjustment scope, we have to, you know, bring it to the attention. The, um, T D M revenue one, now that one was, um, and T D M, I think everybody knows this, Texas Department of Emergency Management. Um, so this was one that I think the previous auditors had brought forward, um, and we had talked through it, um, in year one. And then as we were evaluating it, um, this year and recognizing the project worksheets that have come in from T D M and what is supposed to be paid out to, um, the college over, over time. Um, you know, we said we should probably go ahead and make this or propose this adjustment to recognize it. And so, um, I think there may be some future consideration of actually, you know, recognizing it and putting it on, on the financial statements. Um, and then the last one is kind of a, I would say is a unique situation. Um, you know, whenever you have kind of the boundary fundings, there's a lot of nuances that go into that. Um, and so, uh, you know, this one was just a little unusual. I don't think that would be one that's going to be recurring or something that would come up, um, again in the future. So, um, none of these caused us pause in terms of, uh, these adjustments, but, um, you know, as we talk through with them, as we talk about them with management, um, you know, they recognize them and, you know, we'll evaluate them for our future, um, recording.
Okay, um, I want to stay on T D M for just a second. In business, a receivable generally is generated by an invoice. We're not invoicing, I'm looking to her, but feel free, but we're, so how do you build a receivable for something like this?
So with T D M, um, and Dr. Ben, if you have any other insights, but so with T D M, the way it's set up is basically, you know, any projects that you guys have with respect to, um, you know, disaster mitigation or things of that nature, recovery, then, you know, there's a, a process that's submitted to T D M, and then they put together a project worksheet. And so basically that project worksheet identifies, these are the funds that we are going to send back to or reimburse, um, the college for. And so it's a known amount, uh, in terms of what that is. So that's why it becomes a receivable, and that because you've effectively incurred qualifying expenditures to be able to then recognize that receivable.
Okay, so is that agreed? So it's, it, it's an agreed amount between?
It's an agreed amount. Yeah, so there's, there's a document that comes back from T D M that basically outlines, um, you know, what all the, because basically you have to send in all of your documentation and support, um, for what you've, uh, expended. And so T D M will come back and have this document, um, that's the project worksheet that specifically is very detailed and outlines what those amounts will be.
Okay, and then I've heard the word estimate twice. So you mentioned estimate. Um, is that used in the same instance with respect to the reimbursement? When you mentioned estimate, and I think you mentioned estimate too, Dr. Vienna, was that on another topic?
That might have been on another topic, because typically with, with this particular item, it's, it's known costs that have been incurred already.
All right, okay, yes, ma'am.
That was, I mean, and just anytime you have a natural disaster such as that, we have to have reimbursements. And so we do our very best to collect all of those items and submit. And so in essence, if I've used the term estimate, it's like we hope that we would be reimbursed for all of those things. Sometimes they can come back and say, we don't have enough supporting document to validate this. So very similar to like an insurance claim, you put together all of your receipts, but they, they may go ba- uh, back and forth with you on those items. So that's right, right now, we still estimate that I think there's about a million dollars maybe outstanding left with that, that we think we could receive. But again, we've been going through this for a number of years. So that's why it is, uh, and like you indicated, it's kind of a, a back and forth with them. We hope that we would get the rest of that. That's what we feel like we're due, um, but we do have to wait for them to respond. So I hope that answers the chair's question.
It helps. Uh, I don't fully understand it, but that's, that's kind of on me.
Understood.
So with respect to the receivable year and the, the payment year, is, is there anything that we need to adjust internally to not be in that position again?
We're still having internal conversations, like she said, from a management decision. So some of these were all, most were obligated since twenty twenty for some of these things. So that's why I say it's, it's how you want to determine. Sometimes an entity will decide, like, we're not going to get anything else and may write that off, and then you could get a check later, right? So, uh, so really is a management decision, and we've worked with the auditors throughout the years, um, to look at that. So we continue to work on that, and when we provide reports to you all, we kind of keep you posted on the progress and what we think we still have outstanding for them to reimburse us on.
Okay, and then my last question, uh, promise, in dealing with T D M, and you have your worksheet and the expenses that qualify for reimbursement, is there any insurance company activity going on over here?
Not related to this specific item. Typically, that would have already occurred separately. But I can also get you specific details on that if, if you have specific questions, so.
If, if it's relevant. I, I don't have any specific questions. I just wonder that, you know, of all the money that we pay in insurance, is that working out for us?
Uh, yes, sorry, I missed it. Yes, so typically when we have any incident, we work closely with that team to look at insurance. What can we be recovered from that? What would qualify? And then work with, again, Harvey was a very special circumstance, so typically we don't, um, always meet the threshold of a FEMA response. So it is somewhat unusual, uh, but typically we always work with insurance first with a natural disaster in general. And then we would work with any other, uh, agency qualifications that might, uh, provide reimbursement for our. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, I'm not trying to cut you off when I ask this, but, uh, I want to, since we have an opportunity to ask questions, want to make sure, uh, trustee Stoma, if he has any questions or thoughts with respect to the presentation.
No, I don't. I can reach out to Dr. Mano if I have any, any issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustees will move on then if there's nothing else. Like I said, I'm not trying to rush you, but.
You're fine. Um, and I'll let them conclude. I did want to have one point of clarification. So, uh, when you ask specifically about the, the award, so, uh, fourteen years, we've received the award for the Act for. We have not received the award for this yet. We would not know if we receive it until May. So the budget was also one we've received an award on, and we chose not to submit for that. So as a point of clarification, I just wanted to make sure I did not say, so we would know in May if we received an award for this specific Act for.
Yes, ma'am. Good, thank you. Thank you both very much, or all three of you, not both, especially the field general. Um, so anything else from Forbes?
No, our last slide's just related to the material weakness, um, which, um, Dr. Bn already covered. So unless y'all don't have any other questions on that, um, finding, that's all we had for y'all.
Okay, any questions this side, this side? Seeing none, and good. Now, how's the second year of your engagement going? Give us an assessment of.
Uh, versus, well, the first year is always, um, fun. And, uh, the, no, the second year's was great. Um, I think we really got into a good rhythm. The Lone Star team is, is amazing, um, always very responsive and, um, like Dr. Bn's mentioned, like if there is an issue, immediately willing to jump in and find the solution. So, yeah, it went great.
Is this a five-year contract? Is that correct? Okay, so you have three more years. Okay, good, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Is that the end of your report?
Unless the trustees have any questions for me specifically on the financials or this, I am. All right, thank you, sir.
Chancellor, anything for me on it? Okay, good. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Uh, there'll be no closed session today. Uh, we'll now move to the agenda item, asking for suggested future agenda items. Are there any suggested future agenda items? Trustee vote.
I'm about to go in, into hibernation over here. Is it cold in here?
Okay. Thank you, uh, trustee Wilson.
Discussing different, the community events in each, um.
Okay.
District, is it going to be public or is it going to be closed, or how do y'all want to handle it? I guess so I can know.
It's, it's up to the board.
Oh, it's up to the board.
Okay. All right, so, but how do, but what do we do? I mean, we can't, I don't want to just walk away and go, okay, we'll figure it out. So, uh, it's a good question, and trustee voted, actually, uh, had a, a thought on it as well. Uh, what's the will of the board to figure out how we want to move forward with this? With the opportunities that the chancellor laid out to us at the board retreat to have community events in our district? Do we want to leave it up to each individual trustee to communicate with the administration? Do you want to make it a board item? Any suggestions?
Chair, this is Mike Stoma. I suggest we have a discussion, a board discussion on it, then come up with action out of that.
Okay, thank you.
I was just offering, you know, to have a, a one-on-one conversation with the administration to see what we want to do in our respective districts.
Okay, trustee Mesa.
I think, uh, if we were to have a discussion, it would be, it would have to, uh, go probably to the board liaison, right? If we were to have a discussion outside of, of this meeting, right, to not violate the rules of quorum. Um, so that's one possibility is to, to go to the board liaison, uh, the chancellor mentioned to me. Um, and I've heard of the amazing success and the amazing event, uh, Christmas in Carverdale. And so that's, I mean, uh, one of my inspirations. And then I, I think I've mentioned before at the board retreat that I, or maybe not publicly, but, uh, I've been in talks with, uh, Ms. Pierce, uh, my predecessor, uh, to get her input and, and to have her, you know, join on any, uh, event that I have in, in spring is what I'm aiming for. Um, and so, and that's where I grew up, right? And so that's just publicly an idea that I have, and I'm happy to share it either to the board liaison or one-on-one with any of my colleagues. And I had one more thing to say, but I forgot it. Maybe it'll come back to me, but that's what I wanted to mention.
Yes, sir.
So I think what we can do, the, the sort of the first threshold issue is what trustee wants what date? Right? So maybe what we'll do is through the board liaison, we'll email all of you, all of the holidays we can come up with or potential dates. And then if you can respond back to the board liaison with which one would be your first, second, and third choice, um, so that maybe it just works out to where there's no, um, that there's no two trustees wanting the same date. Then I think we would, the way we would move forward is then contact the first up, essentially based on the calendar, and just meet with that trustee and say, okay, you're first on the calendar. What, what, what do we need to do as an administration, um, to realize your vision for what that event would be? And I think that's what I would suggest to the board.
Okay.
I also, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Trustee Wilson.
Um, Chair, thank you. Um, Chancellor, I have it already wrote down, like, every possible holiday thing going on.
Okay, well, if you'll send me that, then that's what I'll send out to the entire board through the board liaison. And then if you could just respond, subject to the board's approval, that's how we would like to proceed, sir.
Okay, good. Uh, trustee Mesa.
It came back to me. Uh, my idea was to, uh, and I, you know, probably have to get your approval and, uh, thoughts from my colleagues, but we can establish an ad hoc committee or just maybe a, a general committee, uh, because it seems like, and I agree with this, uh, way of doing things is, is we pick dates or pick holidays or themes, what have you, but maybe that'll be for like the most immediate event. But maybe going forward, if we want, and I would like to continue this, uh, of having community events, you know, indefinitely. So maybe we could establish a, a community event committee, that's a possible name for it. So that's an idea.
Okay, thank you. And, and Chancellor, you foresee this going forward? This is, will be the first of many?
Yes, sir. The idea, uh, for the audience is, you know, uh, putting the community back in community college and having a major event in every district, um, led and hosted by a trustee. So there would be nine events at the very least. Um, and we would have each trustee kind of act as the, um, honorary chair, if you will, of the planning committee for those events. And so we had Christmas in Carverdale, we've talked about, you know, fireworks and barbecue in July. We have a Juneteenth event already, and really sort of creating community, um, around all nine of our districts.
Okay, good. And trustees, uh, as I've looked over at the presidents, I think as we communicate, let's be sure to communicate with the respective campus presidents as well. I think that's important. They're a good source of history and resources and engagement. So with that said, it's good recommendation, and we've got to have some type of, you hear me say a lot, some type of process, uh, a committee, and how a committee process, uh, I'm going to ask you, may I appoint and head out committee right now? Yes. Okay, I think I can too. So thank you for validating that. Then let me, um, you're already a chair of a committee. If you don't mind, trustee Mesa, would you chair the ad hoc committee? And we'll do it around community engagement, and I would like to want you to chair. And then for, uh, trustee vote and trustee Wilson to be on it, because y'all both, both voiced, uh, support for this going forward and want to know how it's going to work. So I think that would get us to a point where we could bring something back to the board and report. And then, for instance, I could learn from what y'all are doing, uh, because no offense to Dr. Gonzalez, but I don't know what to do. I didn't mean I don't know my committee, I mean, my community, but I don't know what to do that's, would achieve the maximum benefit for the system and for the campus. So that, uh, uh, obviously, uh, we'll work with you on it for Kingwood. Uh, and then we can get ideas from you and the ad hoc committee as well.
Sounds great.
Okay, good. And we'll work with the, uh, board liaison and the chief of staff to, uh, compile coordinated information and prepare it so that we can come back to the board. Good, thank you, trustees. Appreciate it. Chancellor is okay on that?
Yes, sir. Understood.
Good, thank you. All right, any other future board agenda items? Seeing none, with no further business to discuss, this more, board meeting is now adjourned at twelve forty P M.